Welcome everyone in the room, welcome everyone at home. This is the Bangor School Committee regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 4th. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. It is 7:00 PM, so we'll go ahead and get started. And please join me in the class. Thank you. So first on the agenda, we have a couple of breath admission. Superintendent Tager.
Yes, the Bangor School Department and Bangor School Committee will recognize the Bangor High School debate team as the 2024 state champions. They also earned the sportsmanship award at the championship competition. Congratulations to the team. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Matt Lee Land, the debate team coach.
Thank you. We have had a really great season with our students being pretty much dominant in the field for the entire year. It started out last year with what was supposed to be a growth season, which also resulted in a state championship. And it's continued on this year, and we've grown even larger. And our competitors have gotten even more skilled at both speech and debate. This year, we've actually also got our speech team motivated and moving forward so that they are also growing. So just as a little mention to the speech team, they also came in fourth at states in the first run that they've really had at being able to place. So they're doing great in regrowing the speech team as well. That also includes a new state champion in storytelling. So I will read the names of the competitors. Shall I call them up here to receive their certificate?
Yeah, if they would come up to you to get their certificate, Matt, then they'll come over here after they get their certificate.
Okay. So there's many people who are going to be recognized that are like on the team that couldn't make it tonight. So I will recognize them as well. So starting with Ian Blackwell, Brock Crump, Gabriella Curtis, Beatrix Foster, Sophia Hall, Ethan Hicks, and that's one that is here, Amma Opoku, Brody Reed, Ellie Robishaw, Brayden Sloan, and Anana Pekanini, and Mrs. Hendricks. For those who are here with us tonight, I would like to present a certificate to Giuliana Venturelli, who plays second in varsity Lincoln Douglas debate. So come on up. So next is Lizzie Shum. Come on up. Hunter Schultz, who placed in his first ever Lincoln Douglas novice round. V Roy. And Caitlin Keller, the state champion of Lincoln Douglas debate. So I think I will be joining you for the picture, is that right?
I want to have arranged some people. You probably have to tomorrow. I'll use up to the front, and Matt, I'll use up to the back. And he's up in the front, Paul, and I'll use up in the behind. Hunter, can I have you actually stand over here next to Shelley? And Ben, can I have you stand next to Paul? I'm actually going to have. Everyone smile. Fantastic, thank you very much.
And next, we have the University of Maine Alumni Award Honorary. Superintendent Tager.
The Bangor School Department and the Bangor School Committee will recognize a University of Maine Alumni Award nominee. Bangor High School English teacher Kelsey Stoyanova was chosen to receive the Alumni Association's Rising Star Award in recognition of her efforts in the education system in Maine. Kelsey was the Maine Teacher of the Year in 2022. She continues to advocate for students in the teaching profession as a member of the Educate Maine Board of Directors. Please come up, Kelsey Stoyanova.
How many times I speak on a microphone, this never gets less intimidating. But thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and to share this with you. Anytime that I'm able to get recognized in this way, it's not without a big system behind me backing me up and giving me these opportunities to thrive with students, with my community, and with my school. So thank you very much.
Hold on, Mr. Butler.
Congratulations again, everyone. Are there any adjustments to the agenda, Superintendent Tager?
Yes, we're adding E1B Financial Number One School Revolving Renovation Fund, number two additional bonding requests.
Second.
Any questions or comments? See none, all in favor. Okay, then moving on to public comments. Just as a reminder, as always, a brief statement. Members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. We are here to listen. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. The committee will not permit profanity or shouting and request that speakers be civil. Discussion of specific personnel or student matters and complaints concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Before speaking, we encourage speakers to review school policy, school committee policy AC, which provides that the committee does not and will not discriminate nor tolerate discrimination against students or employees on the basis of a membership in a protected class. Speakers who share comments contrary to this policy will not be allowed to continue. And before starting, please state your name in place of residence. And do we have any public comments tonight?
Thank you. My name is Chung Shum. I'm a resident of Bangor. Thank you for this opportunity. Honorable committee, Chair Hassan Aung, Vice Chair Muzo Carey, Ms. John Drew, Mr. Sre, Ms. Brady. Thank you for letting me address this guest body. I'm here to praise the Bangor High Speech and Debate Team and also to ask for your support. Sixteen years ago, my wife and I moved to Bangor with our four month old daughter. And that child today is a sixteen year old junior at Bangor High School and a proud member of the Bangor High Speech and Debate Team, state champions, two years running. My wife Samantha has been judging individual and team debate events for the past three years, and I myself have judged congress and speech events the last two seasons. And over the course of that time, I've watched my daughter intellectually grow and as well as her classmates and teammates and other students that I've judged from other Maine schools, mostly in the South and Portland area. One comment that stuck with me after this weekend's national qualifier event at Portland Regional High School was apparently my daughter was speaking to one of these students from Dartmouth and commenting on how expensive it is to attend these national events, these national tournaments. And the other student seemed puzzled and said, doesn't your school paper need slates? I have had the privilege of attending national events with my daughter, but having Maine's best go against our nation's best shouldn't be exclusive or exclusionary based on wealth or income. I have donated to the team what would have been my earnings as a congress and speech judge. And I am here today to ask for your financial support of the Bangor High team. Help support the Bangor High team in sending its best and brightest to these national postseason events. Maine students will grow as they face tougher competition. Who knows what these students will face their, his or her counterpart from Texas debating on the floor of the US Senate these days. In February 2022 article in the New York Times, Supreme Court Justice Katanji Brown Jackson was reminiscing about her participation in high school speech and debate. She apparently was a national champion in law torturing. She stated, quote, "I can say without hesitation that this was the one activity that best prepared her for future success in law and in life," end quote. So I guess I'll close here by thanking Superintendent Tager and Principal Butler for supporting the wealth of extracurricular activities at Bangor High, including one very near to my heart, the Speech and Debate Team. And also thank Principal and Superintendent for supporting the nascent middle school debate team that has been kicked off by the Bangor High students. Thank you.
Honorable committee, thank you for having and honoring us as the Speaking Debate Team of Bangor High School. My name is Elizabeth Shum. I'm sixteen years old, and I am a junior here at Bangor High. I've been debating for three years. I've qualified for nationals a total of four times and attended three times, the fourth of which will be later this summer. I started debating early in my freshman year without quite knowing what exactly I was getting into. Now, three years later, I find that debating has greatly enhanced, among others, my skills of communication, writing, and research. I have found family and mentors in my teammates and coaches, many of which I consider my closest friends. Participating in debate has also broadened my horizons and given me a passion and drive in areas of learning I never thought I'd find myself interested in. As F. Scott Fitzgerald once said, "The test of a first rate intelligence is the ability to hold two opposed ideas in mind at the same time and still retain the ability to function." And I could not agree more with this statement. DRC Robinson, the NSDA and NCFL Chair of Bangor, Maine, sorry, not Bangor, oh, the state of Maine, said once to me that the reason why she's so involved in speech and debate is because the speech and debate children are the future leaders of America. And this can be seen with the fact that sixty percent of congressional representatives participated in debate as well as at least a third of the Supreme Court. As someone who has attended national tournaments multiple times, I can say without hesitation that going to nationals is an invaluable experience and a once in a lifetime opportunity for students to broaden their horizons and their skills in speech and debate. Unfortunately, attending nationals can rack up a sum of up to $300,000 per student, which many do not have the privilege to fulfill regardless of their skill and success in speech and debate. As a school district that values equity, we ought to give students the same opportunities no matter their financial means, which are 100% out of their control. The school of Bangor High typically pays for students to attend state tournaments, but as the national tournaments are considered postseason, they don't pay for these expenses. Each student entry is an average of $100. By fulfilling this very minimal burden, we open up the opportunity for nationals to be attended by those based on their merit and skill and not simply their economic status. Thank you all again for having us, and usually I'd say, stand ready for cross examination.
We see why you're champions. Any other public comments tonight? Okay, thank you all. Moving on to superintendent's proposals and updates. We have no action items, but we have several informational items. The first being the strategic plan review.
Thank you, Chair Hassan. Principals Richard Fornier, Kristi Lord, Shannon Shaw, Deborah Swett, and Sarah Vickers will present goal two, safety and well-being of the strategic plan to the committee. Ray Finney will present goal three, safety and well-being. Safety and well-being goal two. By 2025, a full day pre-K program will be in place. Safety and well-being goal number three. Hundred percent of schools will conduct the required number of annual trainings as outlined in the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan.
I have brain slides. The same slides? Or did you, is that yours? Okay. Sorry.
Somebody sent slides.
There should be the clicker right there.
Well, good evening, and thank you for allowing the principals. And also, we have Kathy Griffith and Janice Rand, the pre-K teachers at Abraham Lincoln, who will be part of this presentation as well. As you heard from Superintendent Taggart, by 2025, a full day pre-K program will be in place in 2024, and we have met that goal this year. So I want to give you a brief update of really what a full day pre-K can kind of look like and feel like for the kids. I know at Fruit Street, I can only speak for itself. It has been a long road to get the module up and running, but at Fruit Street, the kids really love having their own space and are thriving. I think on the tour, you were able to see some of that, and the kids really love being in school all day. So I want to turn this over to Kathy, so come on up. This is Kathy Griffith. She is a pre-K teacher at Abraham Lincoln School.
Hi. I'd like to share with you some of the benefits I have observed since we started our adventure last year. To give you a brief background, the half-day program was three hours long. This time included a meal, a special, a recess, and in the winter, taking on, putting on and taking off snow gear. Which, you don't even want to know about that. We also worked with two completely different groups of children with an array of personalities, learning styles, and behavior nuances. Did I mention there could be twenty in each group? In the full day program, the children are offered more instructional time with deeper exploration of literacy, numeracy, and those all important social skills. Teachers are afforded the luxury to revisit concepts and skills in the afternoon if they feel more practice is warranted. For example, the manipulatives necessary for a particular math skill can quickly be added to a shelf or a table in order for another chance to practice. Projects and activities can be left out as there is no need to pick up for the next group. The classroom is truly their own. Basic skills like mean writing, use of scissors, and being able to attend are being acquired much more quickly. I used to work most of the year on these skills. This time can now be used for other areas like letter recognition and letter sound acquisition. Some groups are able to meet, sorry, small groups are able to meet more consistently and more often. I'm able to build on their knowledge and challenge them with more. One of the greatest benefits to me is to have more time to build a sense of community and develop richer connections with my students and they with each other as they practice social skills like waiting for a turn, sharing materials, and managing big feelings and conflict resolution. I'm better able to explore the children's interests and ideas and incorporate these into learning. An example of this is a child asking to bring a book from home to share. This led to many books and a lot more sharing, but we had the time, and those experiences have not been forgotten. While we're on the subject of building community, we share recess and lunch with kindergarten. The kindergarten teachers are already interacting and learning about their next year's class in conclusion. Do we have enough time? Never. But the full day structure is creating an environment rich in academic readiness that is better preparing our children for kindergarten and new. Thank you.
I'm next. So I'm going to cover curriculum and pre-K. And just to say that I had been in Bangor, had seen half-day pre-K, and then this year experiencing full-day pre-K was amazing, like seeing the difference between the two. But up here, we have a couple of pictures of how in-depth pre-K can be now with full day. For example, you can see kids doing science experiments, going in depth in their writing, playing outside, having outside experiences, and then having time to have some play. You know, play that builds social skills and academic skills also. So our curriculum is, we have reading, which is the fountain pen. And this is really hard to see. But the reading is really the prequel to our K-5 curriculum. So all the kids are getting essentially the same kind of lessons that our K-5 students get, which is a good, you know, it's a good continuum for them. So it's rich in print concepts, rhyming, letters, words, syllables, phonemes, it's print-rich. So there's a variety of picture books with nonfiction, fiction, different genres. They see themselves in books. And there's read alouds, big books, and mentor texts for all the lessons. And writing is called joyful writing. That's in pre-K. And the five units that it covers are building community, telling stories, making books, drawing, and early writing. And then math is hand-to-mind, and it's very hands-on. It's pre-K specific, and the units in that are numbers and operations, measurement, data, and geometry. And then all of these curriculums are allowed for using our workshop model framework, which is also a pre-AU-12 district initiative. And then what you're going to see next are just various pictures of kids in pre-K during the day. So you can see kids measuring things in the hands-on math. You can see students writing, using letters, just learning. Oops. And then more students matching letters. You can see the learners hang out there. I can identify patterns, so I can make and label patterns. And then students working together. And then students looking at books, lots of letters, letter learning, word learning. And then science.
Good evening. So some of our pre-K programs this year are piloting the kid's science program. It's a hands-on science program. I got a chance to pop in and see some of the things that they're working on. And it's teaching students how to be problem solvers, critical thinking, critical thinkers. They have to make predictions and then test their theories, and it's all hands-on based. Here, some of our students were investigating how light and shadows work with flashlights and blocks. They did an experiment with seeing if grapes could float by adding salt to water, and it did. They read the Three Billy Goat's Bruff, and then were challenged that the Three Billy Goats, sorry, that's on the screen, to help them get across the bridge. And if they built a raft, would it float in the water? And here, they were seeing how far something would move based on using winds. They were using a straw and some sort of like. So it's really engaging, it's really hands-on. Every time that I pop into the classroom using it, kids are really engaged learners. So it's been a really nice addition for some of our classrooms. Oh, they built a, they even wanted to look like a big bad wolf then. So they built a house to see if it would blow down or not. Students at Down East have been out exploring with snowshoes this winter, which is a big undertaking. Kathy's back working on their snow clothes on, adding snowshoes to the mix is another addition. But we have really promoted and encouraged the physical benefits of just getting outside and that challenge and those experiences that students might not have. In the fall, they went on many scavenger hunts, nature scavenger hunts, and explored and expanded their rating of reading skills using chalk outside. And this is just another picture of them out getting out in the snow and enjoying the fresh air. Getting out as much as possible. Yes, Janice Rand is joining us from Abraham Lincoln, and she's going to talk about some of the community connections that we have, that they've built.
Excuse me, before you, you mentioned that there's a pilot at several schools. What schools are those and how were those schools chosen? If you know.
Down East and Abraham Lincoln. Down East and Abraham Lincoln.
Okay, and how were those schools chosen?
They volunteered.
Fair enough.
Thank you so much. Everyone had the opportunity to do it.
The science program actually comes from Finland, too.
Oh, really?
Hi, I'm Janice Rand, pre-K teacher at Abraham Lincoln School. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss the value of community connections that we're making. It's another area that's been made possible by a full-day pre-K. It's pretty hard in a three-hour block of time to expand and do much more than all that Kathy shared that we're doing. I just want to share a couple of things. I think it's really important to recognize the many benefits of connecting to our community and what that can do for our students. There was a recent article by the NEA that noted a study that said regardless of gender, ethnicity, or socioeconomic status, children who take school field trips have better grades, higher graduation rates, and a greater income level as an adult. In fact, 89% said that outside experiences have a positive, long-lasting impact on their education and career because it made them more engaged, more intellectually curious, and more interested in learning both inside and outside of school. The particular study cited field trips, but there's many ways we can make these connections. The first one is right in our own backyard, our school community. Currently in Bangor, pre-K children are enjoying programs like Reading Buddies, student mentors, book donations from older students, being read to by the staff the children see every day, like principals, secretaries, custodians, and their specials teachers. And in addition, getting to know personal staff connections that we have is very beneficial. For example, our art teacher, which you can see, Mrs. Crane up there with her son. Her son is just an amazing cellist, and he was more than willing to come in and share his talents, stay around and answer questions from pre-K. Next, I think it's important to take a look at our family community. Just taking the time to get to know our families, the cultural diversity, special talents, and the connections that they have can open up so many opportunities. This year, we have a dad who is an associate professor of art at Hussin College, and he's willing to come in and teach the art of plastic casting to the pre-K. And a mom who happily came in to share her family's Chinese food traditions with the children. And then, of course, there's our amazingly rich local community. Here in Bangor, we're fortunate enough to have colleges and universities full of talent and knowledge. We have scientists, physicians, artists, teachers, athletes, farmers, business owners, educators, and the list goes on. Just this year, the pre-K children have had visits from firefighters, police officers, and the University of Maine Women's Basketball Team. And a bit of a side note on that, those young women were so excited about visiting. They've all asked to come back for pre-K and rejoin the kids, which we were welcome. And I can tell you that without a doubt, the same holds true for our third-grade mentors. That's often based on behavior, how often they can come to us, and they're really stepping up to the plate. And we can't wait to get into the classrooms. In the past, we've also visited a local animal rescue farm, a nursery, a pumpkin patch, and even toured the Bangor International Airport. And next month, we have the opportunity to be visited by an offshore wind engineer who brings some of her expertise down to a pre-K level and do some hands-on experiments with the kids. These connections really bring our learning to life, and I'm extremely passionate and excited about what's already happening, and I know we're all anxious to explore what can be done to make even more opportunities possible. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation, but I do want to put a plug in that you're now accepting registrations.
Oh, member spray.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. And just to add brief perspective, I am the parent with my wife of a pre-K student at 14th Street. We've had a wonderful experience. He loves school. I think there was skepticism in some parts of the community about going to all-day pre-K because there's a misperception that these kids are just going to be kind of academically ground down and sort of in the pressure cooker all day. We all knew that was not the case, but I think last year, we had a great presentation from Emily Robinson and some others to really talk through what the pre-K day is like. And then we have certainly observed it ourselves that it is full of positive energy and life and activity and outdoor time and playtime and academic time as well. And the other thing I'll add that nobody touched on because I understand it's a little beyond the scope of core work, but all-day pre-K is a financial game changer for a lot of families. It's really hard to figure out work situations, family situations with a half-day. So I'm proud that Bangor is out on the forefront of this. I think we're the envy of a lot of the communities around here. And I really hope that we can retain a lot of the kids that are drawn to Bangor for just for the all-day pre-K because I'm very biased, but they're going to be better off if they stay in Bangor and schools long-term. So keep up the good work. We are big fans of the pre-K program, and thank you for the presentation.
And, you know, I'm going to piggyback off of that and just say, thank you for a wonderful presentation. And I think this speaks volumes to, as Member Sprague said, to the naysayers or people who said this would be too academic and too structured and too regimented and not enough play, not, you know. So I, I love that you presented the other side of that, that, you know, this really is hands-on, and it's such a wonderful thing for our students. If I may ask, what are maybe the biggest challenges? And how can we support you even more as a committee?
That is a great question. To be honest, we're very fortunate right now to have some state funding through the pre-K grant. That will be a better asked question in another year when the funding runs out. But right now, the state has really provided all five schools the opportunity to really do everything they need right now. For example, Fruit Street, because of the modular, we weren't able to get some outdoor play things around, so we're going to do that this, this spring and use that money to level the ground. And then we'll do that, but the state has provided us some support along with the Bangor School Department. So I think we're good right now, but in another year, I bet you we'll have a rest.
We'll be ready.
Other questions for the committee? Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to the 2024-2025 School Committee meeting schedule.
I don't pay any wants to. So before we start, I actually wanted to draw your attention. Everyone has a small mailer in front of them on the table. So this was put together with a collaboration between Kathleen Nuslan, who is our grant writer, myself, and Walter Ryan, who works for the city of Bangor. So every parent who has an eighth-grade student in the, in the city of Bangor, as well as the surrounding communities, receive one of these. And it actually links to our website.
You want to watch it?
Yes, please.
Sorry.
Let's go. So when someone opens this, there are QR codes inside. Those QR codes will lead individuals to our website, and we will see it mirrored on the website. If you scroll down, there's a series of videos that represent the students of Bangor High School, and they talk about their experiences. And we're going to show you a very quick one. So the videos are really quick in the ads of student experiences, whether they be in, you know, a new student who's transferred to Bangor High School or a student who is actively in the JRGC. So I work very closely with that group as well as other students. There were no students who said no to a video. It was actually, I only have so much space on the website. So it was a great opportunity to showcase some of the things that are going on here. Next, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about school safety and talk to you about some of the initiatives we have. So first off, we'll go through a little bit of history. You can hit the button, please. It's my click. There we go. So the standard response protocol was something that we actually implemented in August of 2022. And this created a common lexicon, a common language, where we could share what was going on in emergencies with families, but also provide that information across all of our schools, across all of our methods of communication. The difference between a lockdown and a stop lockdown was difficult to explain to someone, even someone who worked in education for a long time or in law enforcement. Those were terms that were confusing. So having the terms lockdown and secure were easier for us to establish. This, all of our staff went through a training at the end of August of 2022, and this has been implemented in our website and in Synthetix, which is part of our system with the school. Next slide, please. Synthetix was integrated and implemented in January of 2023. It is a key component of our safety strategy, and this allows all of our staff to have access to emergency response needs whenever they have that urgent need. Whether that be something such as a student has fallen on the playground, if there's a behavioral issue in a classroom, or if there's a more severe threat that affects the school, which may cause us going to lockdown. All of our staff at badges, our alerts, go to the crisis response team and district administration. On average, we have two to seven alerts per week. And going back and looking at our data, we actually had 40 pushes, button pushes between October and February. Response time is usually less than a minute and a half. The ones that have gone a little bit over, it usually takes the administrator time to walk back to their office to turn it off, and that has been the reason why those are sometimes four minutes. But part of that response has been a feeling of confidence with the staff who actually are looking for help. They get it right away. Next piece. Abige is our new communication software, which was implemented recently in December of 2023. This takes three different components and puts it in one working timeframe. So our website, alerts, and social media. Each of you have received those over the past couple of days. We used it Monday morning for Abraham Lincoln with a water main break to make sure that people receive that timely communication. With going into one application, we're able to actually do all of these functions at once. So we can send out news, we can access a calendar, we can do a live feed on our website. For alerts, we can send phone calls, text messages, and emails. No matter where you are, you can use your cell phone or your computer to do so. We also have access to social media, so we can update Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram with one location instead of having to go to multiple sites to do that. It's a lot easier to tell our story, to get that information out. And if there is an emergency going on, families can get that important information that they need to make decisions. Next. Emergency drills. There were some questions that came up earlier in the school year in regards to how many drills do we have? And so Chapter 125, Section 5 of the Main Educational Law talks about what requirements are for the drills that we have. Before 2015, it was required of one fire drill per month of school. And then there was a provision made to allow for 10 drills over the course of a year because of weather, as long as two of those drills happened within the first two weeks of school. The other 10 had to be carried out, or the other eight had to be carried out before the end of the school year. In 2015, there was the addition of lockdowns. And so there are four required lockdowns within the school year as well. Those drills for lockdowns actually do not necessarily have to have students present for them to count for the obligation they'll have to the state. Many of our schools actually use the ability to do them with their staff. They do trainings with staff, they let the staff push the lemons. They use the ability of flashing lights in the classrooms so that, you know, teachers can then find out what it's like to go through that as well. Synthetix actually has the ability to have a voice alert. So I know that Impa has actually been in this school. Did you actually hear that? It's not a large alarm. It doesn't go off and blare. It has very calming words that explain what is going on and gives directions to individuals who are in the school. Many of our schools, and actually all of them that I'm aware of, will actually do directions beforehand. They go on to the intercoms, they explain to students what is about to happen. They ask teachers in classrooms to direct their students and let them know what is about to take place. Teachers can then take that timeframe to actually explain to students what they're going to hear, where they're going to meet, what would happen, why they might use that type of an alert, and what would happen in those situations. We really want to make sure that whatever's happening in our school, our students are fully knowledgeable of that incident, and they know how to react because, as we all know, precious moments can save lives. We also have a website for family resources. Where to click on the link, it would actually take you to a page underneath the superintendent's section of the website. On there, there are videos for students at the high school. I actually met with all grades and did a safety presentation in regards to what to do if you found yourself in the middle of a hallway during an incident. How do you self-evacuate yourself? How do you go into a classroom? What are the expectations of you as a student? There are other resources on here for other grade levels as well. So we encourage families to watch those videos and update themselves on our policies and procedures. Do you have any questions?
I just want to say, I'm just curious, the two to seven on average per week, is that all schools combined?
That is all schools combined. There's some room for me on zero.
Thanks, Gray, for the presentation. I think it's always good to hear these. I know that we've heard a few times about the new alert system over the years. And I just wanted to echo, as a parent who was concerned about lockdown drills, I have a kid, a student in elementary school right now. Going in and hearing the system in its kind of practice mode and in its drill mode was really reassuring that it is not a panic alarm sounding system. It was actually far less jarring than a fire drill and that loud alarm that goes off. So I just wanted to say thanks again for implementing such a solid system. I wasn't here on the committee when it was selected and chosen, but it did give me great peace of mind to hear it in action. And I think that I can confidently say to all the parents and room teachers in the room, it's not a scary thing to experience, and the teacher's staff did a really great job of making it digestible and easy and understood. So the communication has been excellent, and I think that that's a great asset to our school system.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, Chair Austin, I have closed the draft 2024-2025 School Committee meeting schedule.
Okay, and then moving on to report of resignments.
I'm reporting the following teacher reassignment. Tamara Share from Special Education Teacher at Acadia Educational Unit to Special Education Teacher at Down East School.
Thank you on to report of resignation.
I'm recording the following resignation. Anne Marie Roberts, 25, IEP Coordinator, Mary Snow School.
Thank you. Moving on to business action items. The first action item are the minutes for the regular meeting of January 24, 2024.
Thank you, Chair Austin. I am recommending approval of the draft minutes of the January 24, 2024 regular school committee meeting.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Six, zero. Thank you.
Onto, um, financials. We have the school revolving renovation fund.
I'm recommending committee approval of the school revolving renovation fund for Bangor High School, Fourteenth Street School, Fairmont School and Mary Snow School.
Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
Any questions? And your comments? I, um, all in favor?
S is six, zero.
Um, next is the additional bonding request.
I recommend committee approval of the bonding request above the S R R F funding to complete projects at Bangor High School and Mary Snow School. In addition, I recommend approval of the bond request to fix the roof at William S Cohen School due to the windstorm in January.
Motion.
So moved, seconded.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Six, zero. Thank you.
Next, we have nominations and we have extra duty assignments.
I recommend committee approval of extra duty assignments for the school year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Tracy Reardon, point one oh I E P coordinator, Fourteenth Street School. Julian Cookson, point one five I E P coordinator, Fourteenth Street School. Pamela Fox, point two five I E P coordinator, Mary Snow School. Angela Lundey, point two five I E P coordinator, Mary Snow School. Lindsay Wasgumkuk, Assistant of Varstee South Park Coast, Bangor High School.
Motion, please. So moved. Second. Questions, comments, all in favor?
Six, zero. Thank you.
Next, we have second reading of policies. And if you can read all those together, please, that'd be great.
Okay. I recommend approval of the second reading of revised policies, revised policy I C A twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four calendar. Revised policy I I A, selection of instructional and library media materials. Revised policy J E A compulsory attendance. Revised policy J E A A student attendance and student absences and tardiness. Revised policy J E C A admission of resident students. Revised policy J E C B non-resident students. Revised policy J E F A closed campus secondary schools. Revised policy J I C I A weapons violence and school safety.
Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments about any of them? All in favor?
Six, zero. Thank you.
And next we have donations read by members.
To the James F Dowdy School from C and L Aviation Group, Bangor sweatshirts and gift cards to support student attendance. Having a total dollar value of eight hundred and sixty five. To the Abraham Lincoln School from Donald Sawyer, a cash donation for the garden club, having a total dollar value of three thousand. To the James F Dowdy School from the D M T Fund in memory of Danielle Thompson. A cash donation to support students, having a total dollar value of two hundred and fifty.
Can you get a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Thank you so much.
Zero.
Okay, moving on to introduction items. And we have first reading of revised policies, if we can take them all together.
Yes, Chair Austin. Revised policy G D B eight, Adult and Community Education Compensation Guide. Revised policy I G D J A, Erascholastic Athletics Admission Fees. Revised policy J E C E Trap Prevention. Revised policy J F C Code of Conduct. Revised policy J F C A Academic Integrity. Revised policy J F C D Student Distribution of Leavest, Brochures or Other Written Forms of Expression. Revised policy J F C I Chemical Health. Revised policy J F H Complaints by Students or Parents.
And good motion, please. So moved. Second. Questions, comments? All in favor?
S is six, zero.
Moving on to committee updates, um, but first comments and or questions from the committee. Members, sir.
Thanks. I have a question. At first I'll say at the recent school committee retreat, I, I learned something new. I didn't realize that we had a scholarship committee that a, a school committee member sat on. And it, it jogged my memory about a conversation I had a few years ago with, uh, former principal Lynn Silk. She approached me and she mentioned that, and I think she approached others as well. She, she mentioned that she and several of the administrators were interested in, in setting up some type of scholarship in memory of Betsy Webb. And I was just, I was curious. And I, I learned that member Sprague was sitting on the scholarship committee. I was just curious if that's going on or if there's any information about that or whatnot.
That, that is going on. It's, it's in process. And Jerry Hayman is not here tonight, but I can give you probably a better update in our next meeting. But it is, uh, in place and Principal Butler's been helping with that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we move on to, um, representatives' reports. Do we have any tonight? Members, sir.
It's, it's not really a report, but I, one piece of news on, um, United Technology Center. Recently, Member Bryden and I met with, um, Director Amanda Peterson to talk about a potential for a third member representing, uh, Bangor. And we're, we're zeroing in on asking former Bangor High School students who are also U T C students. Who are now currently, um, undergraduate students in, uh, the Bangor area, if they may be interested in joining. And we're, we're hoping to get that, uh, unique perspective of someone who has recently, uh, attended U T C to, to sit on the board. So I, I just wanted to give that update.
And, um, to that point, we did have an excellent retreat on February second. Faith Anderson was able to join us and we talked about all, everything. And it was wonderful, especially for our new committee members, uh, member O'Carry, member Bryden, to really ask questions that typically we don't have time to really cover during our meetings. So thank you to, um, Faith Anderson. Um, I do have a quick, um, D E I V Advisory Committee and member O'Carry, if you wish to, um, share that with me as well, that would be great. We met yesterday. It was wonderful. Uh, Principal Butler, um, reviewed some of the M I S data that came from, um, our students. So more to come on that as the Mental Health Committee really unpacks the data together. And, um, and would, at the very end of the year in June, you will be able to come to you, come to the committee with some recommendations. Um, I know that, um, the, so that's one, the Mental Health Subcommittee, and then there is also Recruitment Retention Subcommittee. A member of Carrie may want to speak to that one. She's on that one. And also a, a P D Subcommittee. So, um, also we had, um, uh, Melissa, I can't even pronounce her last name, so I won't try. But from Catholic Charities and Deena, uh, from the Main Multicultural Center, who were our two, um, guest speakers. Who shared some more information about our M L students and, um, you know, just in anticipation for more students to come. So that was, uh, wonderful to hear from them. And, uh, many of our D E I B Advisory Committee members asked them wonderful questions and how we can best support our, our M L students. And families as they trickle in. We talked about transportation and language assistance and a lot of, uh, volunteers are needed, uh, donations, you know, um, financial and as well as helping move in. So if, if you have the time, um, the Main Multicultural Center is looking for volunteers to help with our families. Um, and I think that's a quick update from my Subcommittee, the Mental Health one. Uh, member O'Carry, I, I don't know if you have any updates from yours?
Um, no, nothing additional from, um, the last update that I gave, but, um, we're working hard to brainstorm ways to, um, to increase, um, our efforts from, uh, which recruitment and retention. And actually, I, um, messaged the, um, um, the coordinator of the Subcommittee about, um, having a, a meeting devoted completely to recruitment and retention. Because we have some funds that we wanna redistribute before, um, they're gone from our, our school district. So we really wanna focus on that and make sure that we, um, have some plans, concrete plans in place.
Any other reports, members, sir?
Sorry, again, not a report, but just a, a related note on, um, D E I V work and really sort of an update. I, I've been in touch with, um, Steve Bailey at the Maine School Boards Association. And really what I'm, what I'm hoping, and, and he's, he said he can be really helpful with this. I'm, I'd really like to see an opportunity toward the end of the school year or, or within the next few months. For school committee members who are also serving on diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging advisory committees from various school systems throughout the state. Have an opportunity to come together, most likely through Zoom or some other electronic platform. But just to have some, an opportunity to, to meet one another, to have some community building and potentially talk about ways that that group could continue on in the next school year. I, I think there'd be some value to that. Um, so anyway, I, I think Steve could be really helpful. Uh, and M S P A's resources and, and their connections and whatnot can be helpful. So just wanted to give an update on that.
Thank you.
What was his name again? Steve Bailey.
Stephen, okay, Brian. And I have spoken to, um, Dana about that as she and I co-chair the D E I V Advisory Committee together. And, um, we are extremely supportive and I know she is too and Superintendent Tager does as well. So I look forward to that. Um, any other updates before we get to member Nuslan? Okay, it's all yours.
Just have a couple of updates as we kind of move into break. My mind is already in Florida. Uh, the state wrestling meet is gonna be held at Pony High School, uh, this Saturday at ten. And so I know the wrestling teams are going to, it's their first year that they've offered it here at Bangor. That's all going great. Uh, girls basketball team is gonna be playing their quarterfinal game this Friday here at the high school against Wyndham at six. And boys basketball will be at Chevres for their quarterfinal game the same day. Uh, both the boys and girls teams for track and field swept the competition at P V Cs this past Friday. Competition started at four thirty and I don't think it ended until well after one. So there were, there were an acceptable amount of people missing from school the next day. I can't judge them. So that just makes me tired listening to that. But, uh, great, great job everybody on that team. The sense of community on that team is really something that's really special. Just looking at all the friends I have on the team, they're a really tight group. I think that's a great team. Uh, as we recognize at first, uh, this meeting, the debate team took state championship title. Once again, I have a couple of friends who run that team and they take that really seriously. I think it's a great program. I think we should put in all, all the resources they need to help exceed. Uh, our T C will be hosting the annual memorial service for the sinking of the U S S Maine tomorrow, uh, at Davenport Park at Main Street. Or, sorry. And Valentine's Day, uh, happy Valentine's Day, everybody. I have a, uh, Sophia obviously couldn't be here tonight. And so she cornered me in class today and asked me to make sure everybody gets, uh, I had the self-restraints. I'm not thinking of this. Okay. But she wanted me to make sure that everybody got at least one or two of these. I'll send her on that.
They're already happy.
That's right, yeah. Be really one for me.
Thank you so much. Yes, and congratulations to our indoor track, boys and girls teams. Um, they did an amazing job of P V D champs. My junior did not get home until like one thirty in the morning. And so I really thank the high school staff and administrators for allowing them to sleep in and, you know, get all their homework done later. So, um, that was, that was a big night. Um, moving on to information items, uh, we have several important dates. Wednesday, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, we have our next meeting with, um, city councilors. So it's a joint city council and school committee workshop, five fifteen P M right here, um, in the library. Wednesday, February twenty eighth, right after that, uh, that joint council and, uh, school committee workshop is our seven P M, a regular meeting, um, right here. Wednesday, March sixth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting, seven P M right here in the library. Wednesday, March twentieth, twenty twenty four, next regular meeting, seven P M right here in the library. Wednesday, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, regular meeting, seven P M, um, right in the Bangor High Library. Uh, Wednesday, April tenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting, seven P M, uh, Bangor High Library. And finally, Wednesday, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting, seven P M, Bangor High School Library. Last call for questions and or comments.
Um, I have a question about, um, uh, the debate, um, team, their statement. I'm not familiar. I'm a new, I'm new to the school committee. What is their funding now, if any? And do they have a specific ask? I know they've probably gone now, but I was just wondering what, you know, if they had a specific ask, if they wrote it, something in writing or?
I'm gonna dig, dig into that. That's the first I've heard tonight. I'll meet with the high school principal tomorrow and we'll talk through it. I'll give you an update probably after that.
Thank you.
I have a question, comments?
Also, I wanted to say, um, a special shout out to, uh, um, Mr. Fornier at Fruit Street, just for, um, the, the work that he did with the pre K. I know it was frustrating and I have a pre K student at Fruit Street as well. And I know that she is absolutely in love with her teacher, Miss Arro, and just loves the school and is, um, adjusting very well to a pre K. And I'm, I, I'm here the same thing about, um, all the pre K's, um, school or classrooms in the district. So I'm just really proud to be, um, a pre K mom in Bangor.
Okay, members, sir.
Sorry, if, yeah, member O'Carry sort of jogged my, my thought process here. Um, and, and perhaps this is something that Superintendent Tager could, could come back to us with. Probably doesn't have the information right off the top of his head, but I'd be curious to know what other events does Bangor High School participate in that have a national event? And, you know, what is that number? And, and do we support other programs or other competitions? You know, because if it is something we can support, I, I think we, we're gonna wanna support any, all or anything that goes to national.
I'll look at the history and get back with you.
Excellent.
Okay. Well, and I just finally want to wish all our faculty, staff, administrators and students a wonderful and safe holiday break next week. And hopefully we come, we all come back refreshed and rejuvenated. So have fun in Florida.
Adjournment, can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?